Right, in that situation, if you will speak for yourself and then let someone else have an opportunity to speak, and then you want to speak for your spouse, we'll allow that because we would like to make sure that you feel like you have an opportunity to share the thoughts from your household. So, that being said, I'll open it up. Who would like to be first? Uh huh. We have two council members that are on their way, but they're on their way, so. Please just state your name.
My name's Paul Hayward and I live on 1135 North Coburn. I have copies here for each of the council members, the mayor and the city manager. And the first part of this, I've described how I spent this last week talking with professionals in the city, and so I've written all that down for you. And I will just, in referring to that, you say I was treated very well and very professionally, and I was very satisfied with the way that all the city directors and people responsible responded to my questions. So, I'm grateful for that. The thing that bothers me, you can see on the top of it, is 22.03%. And since I'm not allowed a few minutes to talk for my wife too, and represent both of us because she can't be here, I will say that when I told her I'm going to come to the meeting and ask them to find a way to drop it under 20%, she said, "or less." So, that's her input, two words, "or less" than 20%. I've discussed in there the future public works project, the future fire station, some of those things down the road, because when I looked at the budget and I saw over $43 million proposed for future spending, I didn't have to call 911, but it was close. So, I just, I gave you some ideas of some ways that you could save some money on that. Last time I talked with a member of the council was when you had the big tax increase for paramedics, and when that passed, I stood up and applauded. I think that's the last time and first time you've ever had anybody applaud when you passed a tax increase. And I didn't applaud because you were increasing the taxes, I applauded because you reduced the amount of the increase by a third, which told me you went back and reworked it, and I was, I was just thrilled with that. And so, I thought that deserves recognition. So, I know I'm late to the process, this started months ago, I should have found out about it sooner, but my, my plea is that you find a way, if you can, find a way to drop it under 20%. We finally got a 3% reduction in valuation from the county, so I thought, okay, finally this year we'll get property tax relief after years of having it continually increase, and we're just going to turn around and give most of it back to Kaysville City. It's like when we got a social security increase and we turn around and give most of it to the Davis School District. We're just shuffling money between government entities, and that doesn't help us, the taxpayer. So, in the most positive way, please reduce the tax bite by not making it quite as severe as you have it.
Thank you. Thank you for your comments.
First, I want to thank the council and the mayor for the hard work that you put in all the time for our city, and I do appreciate that. However, I do have some concerns about the rise in taxes that you're asking for, and these are the questions that I might put before you. Is it a want or a need? And what happened to the idea that the council wouldn't raise taxes higher than the cost of living or the inflation rate, which was discussed about three years ago, that anything coming in the future would not be higher than cost of living? Fixed income people such as myself don't have any wiggle room for more than the cost of living in the raise. This year, we had a cost of living of 6%. My sister, in her job, only had a cost of living raise of 3%. And would like to know how you came up with the 22% raise, which is, it says, and is there an urgent need for this extra money? Is there any place in the budget that can be cut? We obviously are going to have to cut something in our budget to afford to pay the extra taxes. It says, "With gas and groceries going up as much as 100 to 150%, where would you suggest that we cut or do without so that we can pay the taxes?" And the last question I have is, "How does this affect the businesses in Kaysville?" Thank you.
Thank you.
Sorry for being slow.
The tortoise and the hare.
But my, my recommendation is don't get old. These eight golden years. I would recommend that the city back away from the extra taxes. We're living on fixed incomes. You know, my pension is not going to raise ever. And the last time we got a social security increase, Medicare took it. So, we're still basically sitting where we are, so our income is fixed. I was looking through some of the other data that I have seen. Kaysville has a population of basically 32,000 people, a revenue stream of basically $23 million. $707 per capita is the taxes there. Roy has 38,000 people, 6,000 more than we do. Their revenue is $20 million. They only hit their citizens for $533 per capita. Bountiful, 44,000 people, they're 12,000 bigger than us, they're dealing with a $23 million budget too. If you don't like that, you could always go to Salt Lake City, they've got 204,000 people, they've got a $400 million budget. And their per capita revenue stream is $1,900 plus dollars. So, have a heart to us, be careful, because inflation isn't over. Inflation is, regardless of what they try to tell you, inflation is still there. It's going to continue. And I don't know if we're going to line up. If we do line up in somewhere like Weimar, Germany, or Zimbabwe, or some of those places, then what are we going to do? When a $100 bill is worth 10 cents, how do we pay taxes? Are we all going to lose our homes? I don't know. I would recommend be fiscally sound. There's ways that we can reduce it. We were hit with a $7.85 road fee four years ago. Some of the roads in Kaysville that I drive down, if I want to miss the potholes, it's almost like going through a racecar track if you want to miss them. I don't know where the money's been going, but obviously it hasn't filled there. Thank you.
Thank you.
Lorraine Starkey, 573 South, 350 East, Kaysville, Utah, 407, you need that. I just wanted to, I'm here to thank you for your choice to honor your oath of office to represent the citizens of Utah's hometown. In voting for the 20% tax increase in tax rate, I want to thank you for choosing to remember that in 2017, a monthly road fee was added to our electric bill and maybe yours too, about the same, almost the same amount as we will be paying per month.
Excuse me, could you speak into the microphone a little more, sorry? Could you repeat what you just said?
Seven dollars, but it's just almost the same as what we will be paying per month for this tax. I texted a council member to find out what, when the last tax rate was increased, and it was 2019, no, 2019, I don't know, about three years ago, about 30%. So, we have 30% plus 20% plus a road tax. And what I just want to remind us all is that I left a neighbor who is not here tonight because he is taking a second job. Inflation is merciless with increased COLA, the social security for parents and friends that are retired. My children, they're not making ends meet, they live in Kaysville, and they take overtime shifts to meet their needs, and they sell their blood. So, we're grateful to own a home, to have a property tax as a burden. Our daughter saved 12 years so that she could afford this luxury. We will forego our gas and afford an extra $100, and our daughter and her husband will offer two or three more donations of plasma. I appreciate the words that I've heard in this room, that the financial resources of Kaysville citizens are respected and honored. In our home, when prices rise and income does not, we try to work to make do with less. So, we are inviting our representatives to consider doing the same in order, and thank you so much.
Thank you, Lorraine.
Good evening, I'm Jill Drage, and I live at 1102 Dover, longtime Kaysville resident, excuse me. Again, we appreciate the time and all the effort that you guys put forward in being willing to listen to us. In the last two years, I've been a part of a citizen group reading legislative bills. The concern has only grown with each year. Excuse me, I've been concerned about how some of the overreach of these bills will affect Kaysville. I read part of the budget, the Kaysville budget, and some of my concerns that I sent in were the electric meters that were installed last summer. I actually had repairmen come to my home before I knew I had one on and warned me not to have it on, only to find out that it was on, one of the reasons being health issues. The water meters, which are almost installed, it just came down recently that they may have a 29% increase in water tax in Weber. It has been, excuse me, surveillance cameras, I think it's good to have some surveillance cameras. Question is, how many do we need, and is our privacy slipping away? Regarding the taxes, I was really concerned to see on the pie, a part of it going to special districts. Special districts are a huge concern. I don't know how much of the Kaysville money would be going to the special districts, but my understanding is that those special districts are not Utah constitutional. I think that's something we have to look at, that might be a place to push back a little bit on. I'd like to learn a little bit more about that special district tax, it's alarming. Education taxes, those keep going up, and yet we are losing students and the older teachers in Davis County School District. We know why. I know we have some big projects coming Kaysville's way, and that is a question I think we have, is how much will that affect the taxpayer now and after? It's very interesting to read the budget, I appreciated reading the budget, getting to know things more, and I think it would, I would encourage more people to do that. We need to be involved with you guys in the choices that go on in our city. I think another thing to consider with tax increases is what is going on with the dollar, with the things that we're beginning to see that will affect the dollar in the future if they actually go through. Thank you.
Thank you, Jill. Would anyone else like to comment?
My name is Jed Barker, I'm a 63-year resident of Kaysville, and I, like you, love this town, and I have just a couple of questions, and I thank you for this opportunity, and when I thank you, it is part of the obligation that you have as our representatives to hear us, and I appreciate that very much. So, thank you. My concern is, what will this be spent for? And if I knew exactly what it was going to be spent for, then I could say yea or nay much more easily. I agree with what has been said so far. Is this a need or a want? I don't have a cost of living increase this year, and there are many places where I believe this budget could be, where the city could save money or cut costs, or tighten their belt, so to speak. And we all have that need. And so, I, in the time that I have remaining, I thought that this would be interesting. I have, when this, when I heard about this on KSL, it's a concern to all citizens right now, but as I look at Davis County and the other entities that this money that are asking for a tax increase, this, the names that I'm going to mention or the items are strictly cities in Davis County. And so, I'm reading directly from KSL's website, and it says, under Davis County, Clinton, high command on average home value, $18.58 or 5.02%. Farmington, high command on average home value, $120.92 or 29.59%. Kaysville, high command on average home value, 99.26 or 22.03%. West Bountiful, high command on average home value, 46.20% or dollars, or 12.76%. West Point, high command on average home value, $11 or 5.97%. Woods Cross, high command on average home value, $28.14 or 10.11%. And then it goes on with things like the Weber Basin Water Conservancy District and things like that. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I appreciate your time.
Thank you, appreciate your comments.
Hi, I'm Greg Fisher. I came hoping to see a little more detail, such as what's on your website for your 2023 budget, okay? And I've got just a couple of observations from the 2023 that I want to ask about for the 2024 budget. One of them is the use of fund balance or retained earnings. Retained earnings being for the non-governmental, if I understand right, and fund balance would be for the governmental funds. Is it, is there a portion in our overall plan to use any of our fund balances available? Unrestricted, obviously, not restricted. And then the second one would be, have we had some decreases in other revenue streams from other sources that this tax increase is going to, in order to make up for a shortfall in a different source? And I'm interested in those kinds of information. Thank you.
Thank you. Stick around, and we'll be able to answer some questions for you at 6:30.
Yeah, my name's Bruce McGraw. Has this money been earmarked that you're asking for? Is this comment only, or can I get questions?
It's comment only, it's your turn, your time.
Okay, then, I've got questions I want to answer too.
If you want to use your three minutes and ask questions, you can, and then stick around, and at 6:30, we will address, I would think that we'd be able to address your questions then. To be, to be clear, Bruce, I might have made, I might have confused you. If you want to ask your questions now, then at 6:30, when we are passing and making a decision, we can answer your questions.
I think you...
Oh. This is, this is a public hearing, and so, it's your opportunity as the public to address us, but if you have questions that you want to pose during this public hearing, we will be able to answer those questions at 6:30 when it's our time to present information.
Can I ask a question?
You can.
Yes.
Come back up. Oh, okay, that's fine. Bruce, go ahead, go ahead and ask your questions, and we will write them down.
First question is, how much will that be total? And number two, where are the monies earmarked?
Okay.
And number three, when's going to be the next tax increase? And I think that's probably, number four, is how come, I would like an answer for the city to tell me where have they cut that we have to cut to make sure that you get what you're asking for? Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Bruce. Would anyone else like to speak?
Mel Starkey. First question is, I've been following this for a few months, as we've talked about. The big one item in the budget seems to have been the fire truck, okay? So, I get the idea that if it's a need, a real need, we need a fire truck. Fire's important to the city, we appreciate the fire department, those who serve, and recognize it costs money. But it looks like if that's one of the major items for this budget, then why can't it be stopped at one year, two years, three years? So, why does it seem to be a continuous, ongoing event? The second question is, I didn't see a lot of public information given, okay? This gentleman said KSL broadcasted. Because I've been involved, I've known and learned, but is there, is there a requirement, or do we need to change the requirement in the city such that all the people in the city could be notified? I mean, tax increases seem to be one of those items where everybody has some interest. Maybe it's not a high priority to some, maybe it's a really high priority to some who are fixed incomes. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anyone else have anything that they would like to comment about? Looks like everyone's had an opportunity to speak. Okay, thank you then.
Someone just walked in.
What, oh. Are you here for the public hearing?
Yes.
Okay, we have a couple of minutes left. If you would like to come up, state your name of the microphone if you'd like to speak. You'll have three minutes.
He was thinking I wasn't wanting to speak.
If you want to.
I do.
Okay.
I didn't realize it would be this quickly, I thought it was 6:30, but thank you for coming to address you. I'd like to speak to the proposed change in the general plan ordinance that's on the schedule tonight.
Okay, so...
Is this the wrong time?
Yes, so this is the public hearing for the tax notice, there's a sign up sheet outside the door. If you'll sign up for that, you can speak, if you'll stick around for the council meeting.
Okay.
Okay, all right, thank you. Okay, thank you, everyone, we appreciate your participation, we appreciate you sharing your suggestions and your ideas and your questions, and stick around if you'll be willing to, I think that we'll be able to answer some of those questions for you.
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
Okay, thank you, we have a motion to close, do we have a second?
Yes, a second.
Okay, we have a motion to close and a second. On, or, Councilmember Blackham.
Aye.
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 Okay, thank you. Meeting is adjourned. We will start the next meeting at 6:30. We will start the next meeting at 6:30.
Hello.
My intendant.
Okay. All right. Welcome residents, public, and welcome council to the public, let's see, to the special city council meeting for, what's the date? August 3, 2023. I'll open the meeting by just following up. We just held a public hearing regarding the fiscal year 2024 budget, truth, and taxation, and received some great questions from our residents. And so just to kind of really quickly give you a brief history, I'll do that. And then I'll turn the time over to council for questions and comments as well, okay? So we started our budget discussions back in, let me get my notes here, January. So January 19th, council meeting, we did an improvement of the consolidated fee schedule for some water rates. And so we kind of, at that time, started talking about the budget. Since then, we met again in January 27th, February 16th, March 2nd, April 28th, May 5th, May 10th, May 18th, June 1st, and then June 15th. And we had discussions about the budget. And all of these meetings were noticed. Not that everyone's paying attention, and I understand that. People are living their lives, doing their thing. But I just want to emphasize that and to make sure that people know that this is a decision that we take very seriously as a council. And I believe I can speak for every single one of us. We are also residents of Kaseville. We are affected by these changes. And so we hear you and we understand, and we take it very seriously. The budget initially, what we look at as a city, as we look at the revenue, and then we look at the requirements. And we started out with a shortfall of $2.3 million when we started our budget discussions. And those, those differences were caused by a couple of things. First, at Fruit Heights, we used to provide paramedic and fire support. They decided that they wanted to team with Farmington. And so that was a revenue loss of over $400,000 for the city. In addition to that, we had some, we had the fire truck that was discussed earlier. We've had staffing increases and costs that we need to maintain, that we need to maintain, you know, competitive rights to keep great employees and to keep the current employees that we have. And so there were lots of different reasons for those conversations. And so then we ended up at a budget shortfall of $958,000. And so we started out at a $2.3 million deficit. And then with this budget discussion, and this discussion today, we're at $958,000. That's how much revenue we're coming up with, and that is why you receive the tax notice. And so I just want you to know that a lot of thought and a lot of work has gone into this. And you've, you know, the questions have been, well, what have you done to try to save costs and look at wants versus needs? We've done those things. We've looked at revenue. As we compare Kaseville to other cities, there are lots of differences, types of services offered. Kaseville is a hometown. We don't have a huge commercial base. We like it that way as Kasevillians. That's probably why many of us live here. And so because we've made those decisions long ago, we don't have the type of commercial revenue to support the city as it grows. And as inflation rises, things that are beyond our control. And so, and I know that the council will all, I'll want to speak to these things too. So I don't want to steal all the time. But, but just to let you know, those are the discussions that have happened, and that's kind of where we are as far as today's discussion goes. So I'll turn the time now over to council members. Who wants to start off with questions or comments?
I will, if that's.
Okay, Councilmember Hunt, go ahead.
A lot of what I have to say mirrors what the mayor has just said. And I just want to say that I do appreciate the, the many residents who've reached out through this whole process via email or, or conversation. I know it's a complicated thing to keep track of, and I appreciate all the effort and thoughts that have put forward. I think having that kind of input has helped us cover more angles and, and look into some things that maybe we might not have seen. But I also, I also just want to kind of piggyback on what the mayor said to say that it's, it's been a unique year. We've faced a lot of interesting challenges, you know, with the Fruit Heights thing that was mentioned. Additionally, having to look for revenue stream to cover the cost of, of additional wages for our police officers. As I spoke with our, our police chief, Chief Oberg, I asked him when he started having a hard time hiring employees. And he said it started after the George Floyd riots. So a national event has, we felt the shockwaves through our city and, and, and all the cities around us did, and, and they raised their, their, their pay. We had to raise our pay to keep our police officers. And police officers were getting poached from departments all over the county. And, and that's been a huge part of this. I know people are concerned that we're spending too much on things, maybe that we shouldn't be. And I appreciate that input as well. I think the money that we've approved in this budget is going to exactly the kinds of things that our residents want to expect. Police officers, firefighters, and, and the ability to do those things as well as, as keeping our, our infrastructure, our water infrastructure good so that, so that we have clean water to drink. And then also kind of what the mayor said, we struggle with sales tax revenue. And that's something that we can work to improve on and something that I think it's important for people to know that the mayor and the city council has worked aggressively to try to address some of those things. Not to change the way Kaseville is, as our small town, but to bring in more revenues so that we do have additional money so we don't have to keep going back to these. Because no one, no one wants to do that. We're all feeling it. It's, it's not fun, for sure. It causes sleepless nights for you and for us. And yeah, I just, again, I want to say thank you for coming and, and sharing your input and know that, that we, we've done our best on this, I think.
Thank you. Any, yes.
I would add, I think a good barometer to see how we're doing with our funds, you know, is to look at other cities. I don't think we should always compare ourselves and say, okay, well, other cities are, are charging more, so we can charge more. But I think it, it does tell us a little bit. So when we look at the other city cities in Davis County and see that only three have a lower tax rate than Kaseville, two of those which are Farmington and Lake, which have, you know, significant commercial bases and sales tax revenue that are, that are aiding their revenues, I think it does speak to just how wise the, the city's been over the years in being careful with how they're spending that, those funds.
Jason, did your mic go?
It's, it's got a green light.
Okay, okay.
Yeah. Let me try this. Nope. I've got a green light, but it's not giving me any sense.
Sorry, Ryan texted.
Gotcha. So, well, that's pretty much all.
Thank, thank you for that, and I appreciate that. I was gonna, someone mentioned earlier, have you looked at other fund balances and, and fund transfers? And so for the last couple of years, we have used a fund balance to help supplement our, our budget. The problem with that, it's, you know, fund balance is a savings account. You can't keep doing that. And the fund balance was accrued over time, not ended in a calendar year. And, and then at the beginning of the year, actually starting last year, we looked at the ability to do some enterprise fund transfers using our power money that had maybe built up a fund balance of savings and using that money to supplement the general fund budget. Bountiful does that, and many other cities do that that have power companies. So we had robust discussions about that. It was a balloted issue, so it was referred to the ballot a couple of years ago, I think eight years ago. And the citizens of Kaseville said, no, we don't want power fund transfers or enterprise funds from the power company to be used to transfer to the general fund budget. And so, you know, that was a very interesting conversation. Really upset many people, you know, in Kaseville, and, and many people didn't care about it. And so, but we, but we looked at that, and we spent a lot of time looking at that. In addition to that, as we've had these budget discussions, like Councilmember Hunt mentioned, we're really focusing on bringing in businesses that will be great for our community, that will complement what we already have and, and speak to our hometown. And so I guess we're speaking about this because we want you to know, we didn't just said, we didn't just say, oh, yeah, let's do it. Let's just raise taxes. No, that didn't happen. We've had really serious, thoughtful conversations and done a lot of work over this last year, trying to figure out what can we do? We don't want our taxes to go up any more than anyone else does. What can we possibly do to minimize the impact? The problem with continuing to use fund balance and savings from other accounts is that, you all know this, eventually you run out of that money. And then we, we haven't fixed the problem. What we've done is we've just band-aided it. And then you have a big, huge 100% tax increase, which Kaseville did have, oh, maybe 10, 12 years ago. And so we don't want to do that as well. So in order to be truthful, transparent, honest with where we are as a city, we've decided that this year, it's an important thing to have a truth in taxation hearing and to explain. and to explain to you that, yes, costs are going up. We've all felt it. We've seen it. We're experiencing it every day. Like council member Hunt said, a lot of it's not any, at the fault of anything that we've done locally. It's all been nationally driven, supply chain issues, et cetera. But we feel like the only way to continue to be honest and transparent and be responsible with your money is to incrementally do these things and to say, these are the things that we're doing now so that we don't have a big shortfall later. As you've noticed, some people have spoken to the fact that in the budget, the future budget, there's this $43 million op center potentially in there. We have no, no plans to do something like that, that grand. What would happen was the city put it out for bid, and we said, okay, we have a need for a new operations center. It's quite old. It's got all of these problems. It needs to be fixed. And so, we had an appraiser, an independent company come in and say, okay, this is how much it would cost to do that. We all saw that number and said, no, there is no way we would even consider something like that. Now, that being said, that means that Kaysville City will have to continue to just sort of patch that building. And we're willing to do that because it's not, it's, it's a need, but it's not something that we, that we want to, to try to, to try to do at this point. We have other needs that are much higher. So, that being said, I don't mean to take up all the time. So, council, go ahead, and, yes, council member.
Yeah, just to add to that, mayor, I appreciate you, you brought up the op center because the, the staff of the city, they've, they've asked us over and over that improvements need to be made. We need a bigger bay for bigger vehicles. We need, it needs a new roof and all these different things. We, as a council, actually walked through the op center and looked at it very closely, and the bones are very good of the op center. And so, we've definitely backed away, as you said, mayor, from that huge expense. I almost called the 911 as well when I, when I heard that. But, but we're going with redoing the roof, and we're trying to figure out creative ways that we can, to make it work for our city employees for your benefit. And I went into the kitchen recently, and half the kitchen drawers are broken and handles are missing, and it's in rough shape. And, and we can come up with clever ways to, to make that more suitable. But I just want to mention a couple other things, and my volume went up, so this is great. Yeah, we've made a lot of different, you know, as we've been having these discussions on the budget, as a council, we have constantly told the city, no, go back, rework it, rework it. A few things we've talked about are costs to our, our city vehicle fleet, telling the police that they can't have certain, or can't acquire certain equipment. And we have a lot of love for our police officers, but we told them, can you get by another year on what you have with this? And they decided to do that. We put a suspension on discretionary spending with staff for a time being and kind of reworked all of that and, and whatnot. We put a hiring freeze in place. And with Fruit Heights, you know, what happened with Fruit Heights is as a city, we invest, we have invested a lot in our EMS and fire. Well, we have one of the best fire and EMS departments, yeah, thank you for that, in Davis County. Well, what happened is we weren't getting timely payments from our wonderful neighbors. We love Fruit Heights. But we weren't getting timeless payments, and oftentimes, they weren't paying what they should owe. And so, it was a burden on the taxpayers of Kaysville. And so, this council came together, and we took a little more aggressive action. And we talked to them and said, look, this is what you owe us. And, plain and simple, we're not going to put this on our residents anymore. For years, you were kind of making up the difference. And they decided to pull out without telling us, I think, at the 10 o'clock hour the night before a budget meeting. And we can provide better services to them. We've been talking to them since, and we want to have a good relationship. And there may be an opportunity to kind of rejoin that effort with them and make sure they pay those costs. And so, these are just a couple of things. One last thing really quickly, water meters. The state legislature came down and said, cities have to put water meters on all their, on all their water connections on homes. And we asked, I was in the meeting, the mayor was in the meeting, council member Blackham was in the meeting, we asked, how are cities going to pay for this? And there was just no clear answer. The state put forth so many millions of dollars, and it's a first come, first serve basis, but once that money runs out, the state has no answer how these small communities are supposed to pay for that, yet they mandated it. And so, I would like to encourage, council member Hunt kind of mentioned this too. National politics, our state politics, that affects us as a city, and we need people to be involved as well on that end to help us to, to not dramatically raise prices. I'll leave it to some other folks, sorry, I went on there for a while, so.
Thank you. Council member Oaks.
We have five minutes for you, me, and Mike. No, 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 I'm just telling, I, no, I want you to.
No, I, I got you. Well, we started a little bit late because someone was gabbing in the audience, me included. There were, there were a few questions that were answered and, that were asked. And let me try to give a couple, you know, answers as I go through. You know, on special district tax, do not believe that comes out of our budget. That's, you know, that's a county, same as the school tax from the county, which is horrendous. Fund balances, may, mayor answer that. The total amount is just under $1 million. And someone asked if the funds are earmarked. You know, these are just general cost increases and not specifically earmarked. Dean, shake your head and know if I'm wrong, but, you know, and, you know, you talk about, when is the next tax hike? You know, we did not have truth in taxation last year, which we, as a council, vote, you know, voted, voted it down, even though it was requested by some. And, and we, we ate that internally. The fire truck we paid for with general funds. We had hoped to do it differently, but we did it just out of general funds. Of, of some of that balance that the mayor was talking about, we did attempt to, to do, to, to make some other, some other options to be able to help us. You look at the national, the inflation throughout the nation, we're hit by it. Our cities hit by it. If we would have increased taxes a small amount last year, we may not have had to this short, it would have been made much less. But we didn't. And unfortunately, we've got the, the number down significantly, but it is still there. I, that, that's all I, I, this has been very painful. I'm grateful we were able to get the number down about $1.4 million and feel like we did a very good job as we looked at cuts and what can't we do? And others have talked about what some of those are, so, thank you.
Thank you, council member Oaks. Council member Adams.
I apologize. I guess we can start late. Council member Oaks, do you want to say anything more? Okay. So, Dean, I maybe could ask you this, and then I can talk for a minute. How much we pay in salaries per year? Do you roughly have that number? Yeah, total salaries. I think his microphone's off, but just.
10 million dollars.
Oh, about, about $10 million in salaries paid a year. This, just as a, as a course of history, social security costs or the social security cost of living adjustment, meaning the amount that they have increased paying social security recipients, in 2019 was 1.6%, 2020 was 1.3%, 2021 was 5.9%, and then 2022 was 8.7%. And so, from a, from a standpoint of what we were looking at for our employees who live very much similar wage patterns to those who value and go off of social security's cost of living as their litmus test, I guess you would say, if we were going to look at, at the similar increase, we would be looking at 8.7% times 10 million, which is 8, $870,000. So, so, I mean, from, if, if you look at where, where we've been hit and, and what we're dealing with as far as the cost of living increase, it, it can almost exclusively be pinned down to the fact that the cost of living has increased, and we, our employees, in order to keep them, like the mayor said, we've needed to adjust for them. And I think that all of us have just been beating our heads against the wall, trying to figure out some way to make this not be the way it is. I'm really proud of this council. I know it is the worst thing in the world to increase taxes, especially during an election year, for those of us who are, but I want you to know that I value your money very much, and I'll let Mike say his quote. I won't steal his quote, but I just agree with what he's about to say.
You know, I kind of have to talk a little bit about last year first, you know, because I'm one of those people where I knew there was some fund balance in there last year, and I'm adamantly against tax increases because I've always felt like, to me, my most important job as a council member is spending your money. And I've always had to live on a budget my whole life, and I felt like the city should have to live on a budget too. But we've seen some increases. And last year, just alone, we, we had to increase our police officers almost $600,000 just to retain and keep them because of the incidents that were talked about earlier. Not only that, we also had to increase our paramedic service. We had to take over the paramedic service. The Davis County got out of it. Well, the problem was with Davis County was only collecting enough money from Kaysville citizens to, for about 200,000 of that, I believe. And it's $600,000 to provide the paramedic service. So, you are looking at $1 million right there, just in paramedic service and in, in the, in the police increases. And those are types of things that you don't really want to be funding with sales tax, those one-time things. And, and we have a $10 million budget with a lot of employees, but some of those are our water employees or street employees or whatever, which we get revenue streams from those different areas that help pay for those employees. The one thing we don't get in police and fire and cost of living increases a lot of times are people who are funded through the, the general budget. And that's usually funded through tax increases. Well, we borrowed money last year, and you could see, you could only sustain that for so many years, and then you would deplete your savings. And we call it rainy day fund. We call it savings. The state allows us to have so much, and it will only last so long. And we've seen some significant increases in costs to the city also. Our, our fuel costs have gone way up in the city. Power costs have gone way up to the city also. Even though we have a power company, we still use power, and those costs have gone up. And we've had to, and, and we need to be competitive. We cannot just, we cannot forget about our people who work for the city. We need to be competitive. It costs a lot of money to train employees, especially police and fire. And if it's, and if they're just going to laterally move over because somebody's offering a little bit more money, or it was a lot more money is what it was they were offering because we were significantly low. We were not competitive with the market. That was really hard for me because I don't like tax increases. But I, I could realize, we're a million dollars short, and we cannot consistently just keep taking money out of savings to do that because those are things that you have to provide each and every year. And there's no revenue stream for police and fire, really. That's, that's usually funded through property taxes. There are certain things like a fire truck or some other of those things that you can buy with sales tax or one-time funds. You, you collect an excess for something. We, we may do, like during COVID, we did, we did well in sales tax. We had extra money. We were able to purchase certain things, but those are one-time purchases. Well, it's hard to spend your budget on one-time purchases. And so, that's where we were going backwards. And, and we said, okay, when they first came to us and said it's, it's a $2.3 million tax increase, we're saying, no, that doesn't make sense. We, we know there's a tax increase that needs to come, but you need to narrow that back down to, and take out those one-time purchases, those types of things, and get it to where we're making our employees whole, making sure that we're funding our police and fire. Because the one thing you do as a city, we, we do run lean, I believe. People, we've been, we've been accused of running lean here. You don't want to decrease the services that you provide. That's where we were looking. That, that's the point we were getting to, is actually starting to go backwards in services that we provide for you as citizens. Is there some places you could possibly still cut? There might be, but we've gone back to the departments two or three times and said, show us where you can cut more, cut more. And I think they did that. I think they, they, they really went back and looked at their budgets. They came back and says, we can use this another year. We can do this another year. We, we can put off buying a fire truck. Well, one of the reasons the fire truck became such a, a big deal was, it's a three-year delivery, isn't it, mayor? Three-year delivery from order. Well, we, we go three years, we'll have a fire truck over there that's 25 years old, I believe. So, we needed to do some things, and this tax increase is, is showing those things that we feel like we've had to do. Otherwise, we were just going backwards. And that's one thing we didn't want to do, was go backwards. We definitely have used fund balance in the past, but you can't count on fund balance. We don't know what, what's going to happen. I mean, we had a crazy event yesterday that showed us areas probably where we may have to do some work on some of our storm drains. Well, that's why you have reserve funds, is because you may have a project like that. You don't want to take all those reserve funds away and have something like yesterday that probably flooded some houses. I, I don't know. I know I got water in my basement, but, you know, I dealt with it. So, so we have really worked hard on this budget to get it to the point where we said, we don't like going to the citizens with a tax increase, but if we have to, this is probably as little a tax increase as we can do at this time. Is it going to get us ahead? Nope, it won't. It's going to help us break even. That's probably what it's going to do. And I know we have some things coming in the future, and we'll have to deal with them when they come, but anyway.
Thank you. Well, appreciate council. We are pushing close to seven, so we ready for a motion?
I'll make a motion that we approve the adoption of the 2023 certified tax rate for Kaysville City and the fiscal year 2024 budget.
Thank you. We have a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Council member Adams.
Aye.
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 Okay, thank you. A motion carries. We now need a motion to adjourn.
I, I'll make a motion that we adjourn.
Okay, thank you, councilman Brooks. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Right, now, we will go immediately into our city council meeting unless someone needs a break. Are we good? Okay, all right. Okay, welcome to our, do I need to pause? Okay, all right. Welcome to our city council meeting for Thursday, August 3rd, 2023. We appreciate the guests that we have in the audience, and we will turn the time over to council member Oaks to provide the opening, and following his opening, he'll lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
Before I offer a prayer, I just, I, I'm so grateful to live in a nation where we're able to have these kind of meetings that were, I wish we would have had two or three times a number of residents come in and discuss and express concerns or in favor. I, I appreciate the comments every time we have a, a council meeting and to be able to get better understanding. I appreciate the emails that we all receive that will express a concern or sometimes just to say thank you. I'm grateful we live in a nation where that can occur. I have many concerns. I know one of the residents talked about the Weimar Republic. That concerns me. I, I worry that our doll, that it's going to be a digital dollar pretty soon or whatever they're going to call it. That can be, that will express a concern or sometimes just to say thank you. I'm grateful we live in a nation where that can occur.
What a handsome voice.
But I, I. That's almost a voice for radio, right? So, but I, I'm grateful for that. And, and so with that, let me offer an opening prayer, and then if you'd stand for the. And so with that, let me offer an opening prayer, and then if you'd stand for the Pledge of Allegiance with. Our Father in Heaven, we come before thee at the beginning of this city council meeting with gratitude in our hearts, or gratitude for the city which we live in, for the residents, the city workers, and those who work regularly to make this city as good as possible. We're thankful for the concern of residents. We're thankful for the opportunity that we have to be able to serve them as council members. We pray that for thy blessing upon our nation and upon our leaders as they lead us through these troubling times, and we say these things in Jesus' name, amen.
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 I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Councilmember Oaks. Beginning of our meeting, we allow public comment, and we have one person signed up to speak. I'll invite Laureen Starkey.
Laureen Starkey, 573 South. I haven't moved. 350 East. Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Okay. First apologies because this issue is not being discussed today, but it is being thought about, and I want to just grease the skids. We've been talking about possibilities for increasing our revenue, and I know that there are some ideas that we've heard from the Planning Commission of some possibilities. And I happen to be married to someone that loves to research, and in the researching we have found a project that happened in the 1950s because, as we may have felt in the push for multifamily housing that has gone through the legislature and is being imposed on every city in Utah with a fine of $250 a day or 500 if we choose not to The, it's called a Pruitt ego, and I don't know if I spelled it, if I'm pronouncing it right, in St. Louis, was going to address some tenements. They built high-density housing. They were going to solve all of the problems of all the things that needed to happen, and it did not work. Namely, I just want to explain what happened to my daughter. She moved. She moved. She never worked on the yard when it was not her yard. Now she has a yard. She's forgotten that she's allergic to grass. She has gone to classes. She's building a yard, and she has ownership. Ownership teaches and encourages feelings of pride and wanting to make things well for our city. So as we consider, and we've heard from our Planning Commission that, well, why not just build higher? We could build higher without providing for parking, and we have that choice. But we can consider, as we consider the hotel, the four stories, and increasing the levels of apartments, and consider rezoning a commercial zone which could give us commercial money to a housing zone, I would like to consider, why did we move to Kaysville and why do we stay here? We like the way Kaysville is. We appreciate that you, each one of you are striving to keep the character and the backbone of Kaysville as it is. And so I encourage you to read and look at the letter that my husband sent. I edited that.
I had the part about Blackrock and the idea that the Danbergers, people telling us, look at Clearfield.
They have apartments lining their city, and they're going down, degrading. And so maybe we'd like to consider having something besides apartments at the face of our city. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, counsel, do we have any conflicts of interest to declare? Anyone? No? Okay. All right, we'll move on to number four action items. 4A is an ordinance amending Section 17-19, General Commercial District, and Section 17-20, Central Commercial of the Kaysville City Code to add restrictions for vehicle-centered uses. I'll turn the time over to Melinda to present this item to us.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. This is an application that's before us, actually the city's the applicant, and there's been quite a bit of discussion about this over the course of the last few months. But this text amendment essentially would be applicable to our city center concept that was identified in the 2022 general plan and would apply to commercial, general commercial and central commercial properties that are east of I-15 and along Main Street from about 50, it's West, right? About 50 West up through the city's border. And I'll, I have the exact wording in an upcoming slide, but essentially what this text amendment would do is really start having the first, taking the first steps of creating a walkable downtown city center that would be pedestrian-friendly. The 2022 general plan calls for mixed use in the area, and the way our code is written right now, it just would not help accomplish some of those goals. So specifically, there were several different items in the general plan that lead us to a place where staff felt there was information in the general plan to support this proposed text amendment. General plan has five different guiding principles, and those are kind of like our big umbrella items of, you know, when we look at making changes to our city, does it tie back to our guiding principles? So one of those is to enrich our city center and downtown area. Goal in, I believe this is actually from Chapter 1, is to make Kaysville City Center District distinct and identifiable from adjacent neighborhoods and surrounding cities. There's a number of objectives and implementation measures that go along with that. I won't go into detail with those, but there were several different goals and objectives in the general plan that do support this proposed text amendment. Another goal from Chapter 1 is to encourage diverse commercial uses to meet the needs of the community and visitors, focus on primary commercial uses in the city center and secondary uses in smaller existing or future node areas. There is a portion of the general plan that also talks about walkable mixed-use streets and specifically calls out North Main Street for applying this concept of walkable mixed-use streets. Lastly, the Chapter 5 of our general plan, which is our economic development chapter, also has goals and objectives related to this proposed text amendment, talking about improving access, walkability, and creating a sense of place on our Main Street and creating that city central, center concept that's been identified in the general plan. So this is the language that we are proposing to amend our general commercial and our central commercial zone, that essentially any businesses that are singularly focused on vehicles would be prohibited, prohibited on the frontage from I-15, on 200 North from I-15 to the east, 100 East, and then on Main Street between the northern border and 100 South. And that is really the area that was identified in that city center map that's in our general plan. So the, the purpose behind excluding these types of uses is just to start building that more cohesive development that would really lead towards having opportunities for people to come and stay, destination-based opportunities and pedestrian-focused opportunities and development that just when you have vehicles or, excuse me, businesses that only catered vehicles, it just does not help to contribute towards those, those pedestrian-friendly opportunities that we're seeking after. So with that, we looked at kind of what are all of those detail, or those services that we absolutely want to need in Kaysville, but in the appropriate location. And so those would be auto repair shops, tire shops, windshield services, towing services, auto rentals, tunnel car washes that don't have any accompaniment of other services. And what we're really looking for is having those development opportunities that will bring people into our city center area and keep them here. So we are not against drive-throughs. There now are some drive-throughs that don't have any location inside for either retail or dining, and that is also proposed to be excluded. So with that, the Planning Commission heard this text amendment on July 13. They did hold a public hearing. There was a recommendation of approval from the Planning Commission with a vote of five to zero. We did receive one public comment, and I know there are a couple of people here this evening, I think, that want to speak to this item. The one public comment that was received was essentially asking for their property to be exempted from this, this text amendment that's proposed. Real quick, I've started adding, we've started adding findings into our staff report, so this is kind of something new for the Planning Commission and the council. But essentially, what our findings of fact are, these are all the reasons that we look at why we would have a recommendation of approval or a recommendation of denial. So again, it goes, it ties back into the 2022 general plan, the guiding principles. We didn't find any, I mean, we didn't find anything in the general plan that was contrary to this proposal. In fact, there was a lot of support for that. The Planning Commission, again, issued a recommendation of approval. They did have a couple of other recommendations along with our recommendation of approval that I'll just go over real quickly, but one of the items they suggested was to look at doing a small area plan for this city center concept and idea, and that's something I plan to submit a letter of interest for some grant funding to be able to do that. Our 2022 general plan was paid through, paid for with grant funding as well. So it's a similar pot of money that we would apply to hopefully be able to get funding to do that. And the second item was that they would hope as we move forward with redeveloping our downtown, that we look to use, if we have community reinvestment or RDA monies, that we use, look to using that to assist some of the buildings or the property owners to come into compliance with the proposed ordinance changes. So the recommendation is for approval of this, this evening, and then I will answer any questions. Like I said, I don't, I know we do have a couple of individuals here this evening to speak to this item.
Thank you, Melinda. We do appreciate your summary there. We have two people signed up to speak to this, Chase Bryan and Sidney King. You'll have three minutes, and I'll invite Chase first. He's the first one to sign up.
Thank you, Mayor, and my name is Chase Bryan, as you said. Thanks for taking me a second time. I apologize for coming in early. I'd like to speak and reiterate public voice for considering an exception from the recommended language in Section 17.98 of this amended ordinance to include the ability for auto-related services that are existing to be able to improve or expand where they are at. We, I know it's been brought up before. You guys have heard a lot of different reasons for the, a particular property within this area that is affected by the ordinance that prevents them from improving what's existing. And I think one item, well, in addition to showing support for this, one item I wanted to address was the fiscal impact of this ordinance on the staff report and in the executive summary says the fiscal report is unknown. But I know the property owner that is affected by this ordinance that prevents redevelopment or improvement of their property, she indicated in the letter last city council meeting that it was at a cost of $2.7 million. So there is significant impact fiscally in addition to just the beauty and the nature of real estate. Anytime you prohibit something that is already there from improving, it gets worse with time. And in the same letter that was read in the last city council meeting by the Kings, they indicated six different failed deals that could not be developed, either because of city ordinances, deed restrictions, or other limiting factors. So we, I do request that you make an exception within this ordinance to, I think it's great, limit additional car washes or windshield repairs, oil changes, auto-related uses, but to keep in mind that it is devastating to own a property and not be able to improve it. I imagine owning a home in a residential area and being told I wouldn't be able to remodel the kitchen or remove one acre of sod for zero scape landscaping. If it's an improvement and it's adding to what's there and what's limited to be there, then I'd like to see that done. So that's what I'm here for.
Thank you very much. Appreciate your comments. Sidney.
Thank you, Sidney King with the Good Spray. Thank you. In reference to the prohibitive uses and in the specific line of spray and tunnel car washes which are not accompanied with a convenience store, have a proposal to continue to be exempted on my two pieces of property at the Good Spray on 370 North Main to a specific agreeable design with the city that would allow that portion of the ordinance replacing my car wash with a new updated car wash with an additional business, an accompanying business, maybe instead of it being a convenience store, that would still allow maybe another soda shop, a coffee shop, something with inside seating that will be the combined use as specified right there, to continue to move forward with your redevelopment design that the citizens of Kaysville have asked you to do and continue to work towards this with an agreeable plan that would create a better space, still be able to make a decent use of my business because as of right now, right now as a car wash, that's what it's going to stay as. So I'm just asking for an exemption based on being able to work with the city on an accompanying use that would be permitted. Thanks.
Thank you, Sidney. All right, counsel.
I have a quick question.
Councilmember Adams.
I have a quick question for Melinda. One of the comments that was made was that we, in doing this, would be prohibiting improvement of the current business. Is that true, or is it that it's prohibiting the expansion? I guess what I'm wondering is if, because maybe I don't understand it correctly, if, for example, if they wanted to do a quick quack in the exact same.
Footprint.
Footprint, thank you. Footprint, where the current car wash is, that would be allowed or not allowed?
No. So generally municipalities have what's called a non-conforming, an ordinance about non-conforming uses. So when, and what that is, is sometimes a use, not sometimes, a use should So when, and what that is, is sometimes a use, not sometimes, a use should be legal. And then sometimes years down the line, code is changed, and then that becomes a non-conforming use. So, take my glasses off. But the purpose statement of non-conforming uses, which this already exists in our code, is that we're trying to gradually eliminate those uses that maybe were desirable in the past that don't fit the goals and objectives of the city for the future. There are, so within that existing footprint of the building, if there were to be a need to replace, you know, the sprayers or the water filtration system or something like that, they would be able to do that. But the code does not allow for expansion of that use. And so if you wanted to tear down that existing building and put in a tunnel car wash across a separate parcel, that would be an expansion of the use. There is also a section in our non-conforming code that says if you voluntarily demolish your building, then you're not going to be allowed to replace. So our non-conforming code is very straightforward. It matches what I think most municipalities have in their code. But it would, it would prevent the expansion. It would prevent a tear down and a rebuild, but it would not prevent anything from ongoing maintenance, right? Like if there, if a new facade, you know, improvements to make it look more aesthetically pleasing, I don't think we would limit a replacement of a facade. But if the applicant came in and wanted to expand from four bays to five, that's what we would prohibit. Or what the code prohibits.
Okay. Councilmember Hunt.
Along that line, if they wanted to make it like taller, say, for a different kind of vehicle to come in and be cleaned, is that an expansion or is it still okay because it's within the footprint?
I think if it's within the footprint, I would.
I think item four in our non-conforming uses would allow for that because I know Sidney talked about wanting to raise the roof. And I think item four just says repairs and structural alterations may be made to a non-conforming building provided that the floor space is not increased.
Yep. So I think that would be allowed.
Councilmember Jackson.
Yeah, so I'm just curious about the language in there that says, let's see here. Yeah, won't allow for like a tunnel car wash unless they're accompanied with a convenience store. I'm curious why that language was added there versus just leaving it at tunnelled car washes.
Sure, that's a good question, Councilmember Jackson. So part of what the general plan and our residents have been asking us to do is to create opportunities for mixed uses. So an individual is not going to walk over to a car wash, right? They're going to drive. It's the only reason why they're going to go there is to wash their vehicle. However, if somebody lived close by and they just wanted to go get a beverage or a snack, then that provides a retail destination within the same use. So the thought behind that was that we wanted to provide opportunities for people to shop conveniently if it was tied to a use that's also automobile-focused.
Okay. And, you know, one thought I had when I looked at that is can a tunnel car wash go in and just have a very small retail section of whatever? And that is kind of a loophole potentially? I hate to use the word loophole, but it feels like it, kind of.
So it doesn't say a retail area, it says a convenience store. And so I would, I would not, like, I know there's been car washes that I've been to that have like a section where you can buy some gift, not gift cards, but like greeting cards. Or they'll have, you know, you can buy your scents for your hanging tree from your, you know, to make your car smell good. I would not call that a convenience store. That would be kind of incidental retail sales. I would call a convenience store something that has, you know, like what you see when you walk into a Chevron or a Maverick and they have stores full of things for people to purchase, so.
So the language, do you feel like the language is strong enough if an application were to come into the city for you to justify saying no if it didn't include the typical convenience store items such as like food and things like that?
Yeah, we could probably strengthen that if that's a concern and just kind of come up with a convenience store or even have a minimum square footage of a retail sales area. That gets a little bit tricky though, too, at least setting a square footage. But, you know, I think that we could come up with a definition for a convenience store and include that so that it's very clear that, you know, we're not looking for your two stands of greeting cards. We're looking for an actual more of like a bodega or a little market.
And I may propose that we strike out the line that says which are accompanied with, I don't know exactly what it said, but which are accompanied with a convenience store, and then come back to and have that be another discussion to establish in strong language what that would look like and then to determine if that should be put back in. Would that be?
Yeah, we could do that. I think the, if you eliminate that section that says which are not accompanied with a convenience store, essentially you're just saying we're not allowing any new sprayer tunnel car washes, and that may satisfy the goals of the general plan as well. And then we wouldn't need to worry about defining convenience store, but it's whatever, you know, in the end, the council wishes to do.
That's what I would propose. And I mean, I love the fact that Quick Quack would want to come in, but I think just the diversity that we want and the downtown we want, I love, I use your car wash all the time because I don't want to have a monthly membership. It's just too much money. And so I like to pick and choose. I like having that diversity, and so I would propose that we encourage the council.
Would you like to make a motion?
Yeah. Well, I want to let everyone speak.
Well, the only question I have to strike the tunnel car wash is a lot of chain.
He's not asking to strike the tunnel car wash. He's asking to strike the section that just says unless they're, oh, you're right.
Yeah, that's why I'm confused because there, I know there are a lot of convenience stores which we are trying to encourage to come in here because they're retail sales. And some of them offer those, like Chevron offers theirs down there, you get a punch pass or whatever, or you get so much of this and you get a car wash or something. I mean, I think there are, like 7-Eleven used to, wasn't 7-Eleven, who was the first one, went down on 400 West on the south side, they put a, it was part of what they offered in the sale of the convenience store. And so was the McDonald's Chevron when they did it. They offered so much and they only had one bay, you know, it wasn't like, and it was an automatic one where you had to get so many, you couldn't like go spray your own car. You just had to either buy a punch pass or do something. So I understand why it's probably attached to a convenience store. It's just a matter of whether you want to strike it or not.
And I actually agree with you, Councilmember Blackham. I think for the sake of why this is coming before the council tonight, I would prefer to strike that out and come back to that with tighter language to determine what that would look like, so.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay. So we're at, anyone else want to comment? We, I don't want to cut anyone short.
You know, this is, I.
Go ahead, I can talk after you.
Oh, no, you go ahead. I jumped in.
Sorry. With all, I feel really dumb right now. With all the talk the Councilmember Jackson brought up, I've gotten kind of muddled on where we were with, so prohibited uses were tunnel car washes which are not accompanied with a convenience store. So tunnel car washes that are accompanied with a convenience store are a permitted use? Okay. And you're proposing to just remove tunnel car washes altogether?
No. Remove the convenience store aspect and tighten that.
Right, right, right. Putting tunnel car washes as prohibited altogether.
Yeah, leaving tunnel car washes in there along with the other establishments, just removing what Melinda struck out, striked out, yeah.
Okay. Thanks.
So as I, just for clarity, as I understand Councilmember Jackson's idea is that it wouldn't matter where the tunnel car wash, the car wash was, wouldn't matter what business it was accompanied with, it would be prohibited under this code until we, until the council made further changes in this area.
In this area.
No car washes, no more car washes, period, in this area.
Yeah.
No, no new ones.
No new ones, yeah.
Thank you.
Okay. 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 Councilmember Blackham, go ahead.
You know, I've certainly struggled with this one, I hate to say, because I've been around and seen the car wash over there and there'd been a Kaysville business for 30 years, you know, or 25 years. And so this was really hard for me to say, oh geez, we can't let an existing business expand. But on the other hand, I understand that, you know, there, it's, these people are business people. The Kings are business people. They understand. Definitely, we're trying to get a different vision for Main Street. I'm not quite sure what that vision is yet. I'm not sure what businesses we would say yes and no to that came in tomorrow. I know we've been accused a lot of telling businesses they can't come here, but I don't agree with that because businesses who have tried to come here and could make it work and the pro formas worked usually came here. The ones who looked at it, who were, you know, would come out and say, oh, such and such is coming to Kaysville, it was usually their decision not to come here. It wasn't the city's decision. It's because they couldn't make it work. So when people say, you know, there's been a lot of businesses the city's turned down, what are they? Tell me what they are. I know there was a Burger King because of a deed restriction. That's the only one I think I really know of. Other than that, you know, this is, this is hard for me to say because we've got a lot of businesses that are automotive related. We got the Big O Tire, we've got some windshield guys down, we've got an auto repair shop down here, we've got another small engine repair right here. And if it's a different vision that we're trying to get, I get it. I'm on board with that. I think that there needs to be a vision. I just don't know what that vision is because everybody keeps talking about old Main Street and they always show a picture of those buildings across the street here. I don't see anybody building these buildings in the future. That's just not what you build anymore. And I don't see anybody down on North Main bringing those buildings right up against the street, property line to property line, brick veneers and all that like you see in old Main Streets, about three or four blocks in Logan, Provo, what we consider these historic Main Streets. We have a historic Main Street and it runs from 200 North about to Center Street, a little bit past. But if we think that's what's going to continue, I don't know. You know, that's, you're trying to predict that that's what's going to look like going there? I don't think so because we've had some new buildings built on North Main and that's not what they look like. They're nice buildings, they're modern buildings, and they look really good. Now, are we trying to do a different diverse feeling on Main Street in Kaysville and are we trying to stop from overdoing certain types of business? I think so. And I, and I, and I, you know, I met with Ms. King over there and we talked and I still think she has the ability to operate her car wash and it's a, and if she wants to keep it and keep operating it, it's definitely, I think, feasible for her and she'll keep making money at it. But I also think she has the opportunity as a business person to have a return on her investment where she owns the two lots. And I do think the right company would come along and present her with an offer of some kind that would work for her and it would be lucrative for her and something in a different vision that I think the city's trying to get. I'm just not quite sure what that vision is yet because I haven't seen that business come in here and propose itself yet. So I do think this opens up the ability to see some diverse other buildings. Will they come here? I don't know. I'd like to see somebody come. I'd like to see some coming in here. I mean, we have a lot of single-family residences that live on Main Street on North Main. I don't see those people selling out because it's their home, you know, in the near future unless, I guess unless they make it. Exactly. You know, they bring in enough money to say we can move somewhere else. But, so I'm buying into the vision. I understand it. I'm a really hard time with the Kings and their ability to expand, but I understand they are very much business people. If it was their only family business and her son was just knocking down the door saying this is what I want to do for the rest of my life, I don't think that's the way it is. I think Kings understand changes and I think they understand the ability to be able to use these properties and make them work for them in the future and Kaysville together without having to put the Quick Quack in at this time.
All right. Thank you, Councilmember Blackham. Councilmember Jackson.
Yeah, I appreciate your words, Councilmember Blackham. And, you know, I feel strongly that when we talk about return on investment, we also have to protect other businesses that have already established themselves or that are already at the plans, too. And so I don't want to be a city council to pick and choose, but I also feel like the vision will come as we make these tough decisions to move forward to create a city that has a lot of diversity and whatnot. So with that, I would like to propose that we approve an ordinance amending Section 719 General Commercial District and Section 1720 Central Commercial of the Kaysville City Code to add restrictions for vehicle-centered uses. And can I add as well, with the strikeout of which are not accompanied with a convenience store in Section 17-19-8?
Thank you. We have a motion. Do we have a second?
So just to clarify, though, we would need to strike that out in 1720-8 as well.
Okay.
Okay, yeah.
Okay. Discussion.
Yeah.
Yes, Councilmember Oaks.
And my concerns in why I didn't second is that what would be the unintended consequences of striking that out, you know, without really vetting? Because I, you know, is there a, I don't know if the come and go, you know, since Maverick bought them, if they'll end up, you know, Maverick does not do car washes normally if there's not going to have one, but what if, you know, we're saying that right then that there'd be no tunnel car washes anywhere else in the city.
We're not saying that. Just on Main Street.
Just downtown.
Okay.
Center North Main.
Okay. I'm sorry, did I, yeah.
Okay. But I'm glad you brought that up because we don't want people to think that that's the case. Yeah, we need to clarify that.
And to that point, Councilmember Oaks, I completely agree with you. What are the unintended consequences of leaving that in at this time without having stronger language? When someone comes with an application to the city, to Melinda, I would like the language to be as such for the city to say yea or nay depending on what that strong language says. And I just feel like this is a little loose and I would like to come back to establish what is the definition of a convenience store. I think for the sake of this argument, this is why I made that motion, so.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for that clarification. Anyone else? No? Okay. Call for a vote. Councilmember Hunt.
Aye.
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 Okay, thank you. Motion carries. All right, 4B, an ordinance enacting Section 17-3-4 fireworks stands, Christmas tree stands, and temporary or seasonal retail sales of the Kaysville City Code. Turn the time over to Melinda to present.
All right, I don't see the applicant here this evening. This is coming to the city as a follow-up of a mistake that was made last year. And city inadvertently issued a business license to TNT to sell fireworks at the Davis High School out of the parking lot. Reason why we shouldn't have issued that is because it's zoned, single-family residential, and retail sales are not allowed in the single-family zones. So. So we let TNT know last year that we would, they already had their tent erected by the time that we realized this mistake, and so we said, look, we'll let you sell this year, but if you want to do it in years to come, then you'd have to submit a text amendment to have the code changed. So, that said, they did submit a text amendment, and that's what's before you this evening. The ordinance would allow for temporary sales on properties that are non-residential and located along fronting arterial and collector streets. So our Chapter 8, I think it is, defines our major street plan, and so we would look to see what all of those streets are, you know, the Street Angels, Sunset, 200 North, and it also, the code requires a site plan submittal, requires that there would be adequate parking, there are setbacks that are established in their access requirements, you have to have an actual curb cut, we don't want people driving up over, you know, a sidewalk, and then there's some cleanliness and maintenance standards. The applicant submitted the code that Clearfield City had adopted, I think, two years ago. And so I based the draft ordinance that you have in your packets this evening off of that, I did simplify quite a bit of it, and then, of course, catered that to Kaysville. So this was before the Planning Commission at the last meeting, again, on July 13th. They have sent a recommendation of approval to you, a vote of 5-0, and we have not had any public comments received on this proposed text amendment. The findings that have been identified by staff and then the Planning Commission, there's nothing in our general plan that is contradictory to this. We found the, you know, sale of fireworks and other seasonal items would be a nice service to have available for residents, and then, again, the Planning Commission sent that recommendation of approval. So this also would apply, it's not just to fireworks, but it would apply to Christmas tree stands, those types of things, you know, the, even sale of pumpkins, trying to think of anything else, but those temporary seasonal retail sales.
Okay, thank you very much. We don't have anyone signed up to speak to this, so we will go to council questions, Councilmember Adams.
No, I don't know why it bothers me, but like, last meeting, we had the change in, for chickens, and these folks were here. I don't know why it bothers me that the applicant isn't here, but it does. Same with maybe this beekeeping as well, if it's not important enough for them to show up.
The beekeeper.
Oh, you're doing the beekeeping? Sorry, you didn't come in wearing your hat. All right, I digress. Any understanding why they wouldn't come, or do they just think it's going to get approved?
I will say this, I asked my staff to notify them, I hope that was done, I don't know if it was, because I didn't do it myself, so I can send a text and see, I don't know if I'll get a response, but. They were present at the Planning Commission meeting.
Okay.
Councilmember Blackham?
Wasn't there, I mean, just on, one of the reasons, too, they were trying to push this, don't they donate some of the money to Davis High? That's what I thought they were.
Ah.
Yeah, they did do it as a fundraiser.
It's a fundraiser.
Okay, okay.
Is Mayor, Mr. Mayor Jim Talbot's son?
Mr. Lyons, can you, can you come to the mic?
You can be their proxy.
It's Mayor Talbot's son who presented to the Planning Commission, and we gave him plenty of grief for being Mayor Talbot's son, but they do donate to the, I think it's the baseball program for Davis High, and so he presented here for that. We love him, his dad's a great guy, we weren't too sure about him, so, but yeah, they presented, they were there, present for the entire meeting, so, they spent three hours with us, because we had a big agenda item ahead of them.
Lucky them. Okay, thank you. All right, any other questions? Nope, okay, ready for a motion?
I'll make a motion that we approve an ordinance enacting Section 17-31-4, fireworks stands, Christmas tree stands, and temporary or seasonal retail sales of the Kaysville City Code.
I'll second.
Okay, thank you, we have a motion and a second. Questions, comments? Nope, seeing none, Councilmember Oaks?
Aye.
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 Okay, motion carries, thank you. Moving on to number, or, letter C, item C, an ordinance.
Nay.
An ordinance announcing Section 17-31-5, beekeeping of the Kaysville City Code. Melinda?
Um, I did get a confirmation, they were notified, but I don't know why they're here. So, this is the last time this evening you'll have to hear from me, you're welcome.
Dang it.
Nay.
So, we have had another text amendment submitted to the city from Mr. Steve Lyon, who is here this evening, he also happens to be a planning commissioner. We have a section in code that says, if it's not listed as a permitted use, it's not allowed. So, we don't have anything in our code, a provision that allows for beekeeping. I understand that there are quite a few.
We have a lot of beekeepers.
People that do it, but it's, it's technically not allowed. Mr. Lyon would like to have bees on his property, and he would also like to be in compliance with his owning code, so he has submitted this text amendment. Thanks to his background and expertise, he wrote this, it was very well-written, we really didn't need to do anything as staff to tweak the proposal, which is nice. So, real quick, the ordinance requirements are, essentially, you have to meet what state code requires, you have to register with the state, there are some setbacks, you would have to have your hives five feet from property line, the hives must have removable suction frames, they have to be six, that says, it is six inches above ground, and they need to have weather-resistant traps. They also have to be placed in rear yards, and they have to be away from contact with humans and domestic animals. So, that said, I am not the resident expert on apiary and beekeeping, but we do have one, so our applicant is here this evening to answer any questions. But this was also in front of the Planning Commission on July 13th, yes, it was a long meeting, we were here until, I think, 9:45. Commissioner Lyon abstained from the vote, but it did pass with a vote of 4-0, and we did not receive any public comments.
Thank you for that, we don't have anyone signed up to speak either. So, applicant?
Good evening.
Good evening.
I took the, I'm taking, process of three-year course with University of Montana for the Master Beekeeping Course, and part of the first-year apprentice course, you have to go out and look at what the local ordinances say, so I looked at ours, I'm like, there's not one there, but all the cities around us, Lakeview, Centerville, all have it. So, got in, as I know, being a planning commissioner, it is not the ordinance, it's not allowed use, well, I've got neighbors, myself, and others who all keep bees, so, just wrote the ordinance so that we can grandfather in those of us who are already doing this. It's a great use, I mean, it's a great way to maintain the farm feeling that people have, it's pollination, I mean, already in the state, there's 450 native bees already in your soils, you'll see them out in your bees, and they pollinate, but this is for the, these are for the European bees, the, mostly Italian bees are what people keep around here. So, this just brings that into compliance. The state is pretty much the compliance body for this, USDA and the State Department of Agriculture, so you have to register your apiaries with the state. There's a few commercial entities, there's one up on Mutton Hollow that runs a pretty big apiary close by, but they're regulated both by state and by USDA, and so it just allows the, allows the permitted use, and for people to do what they love, and, you know, if they want to do commercial grazing, they want to keep a few hives in their yard grazing, but it just puts on ordinance and allows people to do it.
All right, thank you. Do we have any questions?
No, I just hate it, because I'm allergic, my wife wants to put them in, probably to collect my insurance.
So, I have one comment, and a question. So, mosquito abatement, one of our biggest frustrations is beekeepers and people with beekeeping, they request no spray zones, and I would propose that we adopt this ordinance with the beekeepers not being able to request a no-spray zone, because if you do request a no-spray zone, it has to be so far away.
Well, and I'll speak to that, because the thing I see, and this is, and if you look at some of the cities, they say it has to be so far back from the front lot line. Most beekeepers, I keep mine in the back of my yard, because by the time they're done spraying, you know, it is, I think, and I'll just, I'll overgeneralize, and most generalizations like this are overgeneralized and generally wrong, but by the time they're done spraying, they're spraying on the street, by the time that settles, it doesn't get to the back of your yard.
And that's what, we've done so many papers on bees and stuff like that, I know Salt Lakes had their students doing studies on bees and bee spray, and as long as you spray as per label, which you're supposed to spray as per label, there is no issues with bees.
And I see that, I see this all the time, and so you'll see, there's one down on Sunset on the corner, so it says, don't spray between here, well, you spray, so let's say you stop and you don't spray between that, it's still going to settle in between there, but also, if you notice where it settles in the, in that intermeeting space off the street, if your, if your apiary is in your backyard, it's not going to, it's going to do what it needs to do, that frontage, and it's not going to settle the back, so, I mean, I can't disagree with what you want to do, because temporarily, if you're, if you're putting it in the back of your yard and doing those things, also bees are typically active at night, I mean, they're in the hive, they're down below, they're, they're settled in their, in their nucleus, in the center of the hive, you're not going to run into issues that way.
So, what mosquito abatement runs into is somebody will do a no-spray zone because of such, and, and then the neighbors are all mad at the mosquito abatement, because they have all kinds of mosquitoes, because they can't spray in that zone, so, that would be my only thing, is that we include a no, that they cannot request a no-spray zone.
Your favorite?
Oh, I would agree, I think, I mean, you've got to balance the public good with the ability to, I mean, it's disease control, I, my dad was an epidemiologist, I mean, I understand, you've got to control disease in community, you can't exempt certain parts of the community out from other parts, just because of one preferential treatment, I mean, if we start doing that, then we end up with, you know, we start parsing our communities like a puzzle, no, you've got to be fair and balanced with all the community.
Thank you, Councilmember Blackham, that's a very good addition, okay, anyone else?
Can I make a comment?
Absolutely.
It was brought up once in a planning commission meeting by Commissioner Sonloff, who's no longer with us in that way, and, but it was, it was, he's not on the planning commission.
He moved, he moved.
Did he die?
No, he didn't die, oh, he moved to Layton, so, no, just kidding, we love Layton. But he brought up once, that often when we do things up here, it restricts freedoms, and it's cool to be able to look at something like this, that will actually be allowing us to give people more freedoms in the city, so it was kind of, just wanted to point that out, it's kind of, it's not very often, but it's kind of fun. Sorry, that's all.
Great comment. Anyone else?
Since we had two restrictions earlier, exactly?
Yeah.
Well, a question, I guess it wasn't very clear, and I would love to look at research on this, but I'm curious how the mosquito abatement, how that affects bees. Do you have any, have you talked about that in your, your program?
A little bit, I mean, what you end up with, if I could digress a bit, what you end up with is, in some areas, they spray heavy, so you'll have, in these agricultural areas, where they come in and they spray really heavy, like with the planes, and so if you're really close to those areas, I know the master beekeeper, who I work with, Rich Holmer, who's over in Layton, some of you may know him, he's the president of the UTA Beekeeping Association, where he keeps his bees out by Layton, he has to be really careful, because they spray by the planes out there, and so that's that area that is a really dense zoning, so, I mean, I think, you have to be careful, because it is, it is a poison, it's noxious, potentially, to all the insects, but, you know, yeah, it 'll kill bees, and they blame, I mean, there's been national studies, that's why it's reducing bee populations, there's several reasons why bee populations are being reduced, part of it, they think, is because of over spraying with, for mosquitoes, but there's other reasons, you've got American foulbrood, which is a very nasty disease, which they finally, USDA has approved the first vaccine for bees this year, European foulbrood, they're mites, so you've got three things that we have to control for, and that's the reason the USDA regulates this with the state, so, potentially, I mean, it's the reason you're seeing a decrease in it, but the other thing is weather, I mean, this last winter, I lost two hives because of the wet weather, winter went too long, and they couldn't survive, so, you know, does the spray hurt, probably, but if people studying it, I don't, I mean, it's one of those things, how do you really test for it? What are your controls?
And, to that point, the residue of the mist, when it settles on flowers, like the next day, when the bees come?
And that's, and that's the conversation, is the testing, I mean, the big guys who get into this is like University of Montana, and they have the big conversations about trying to reduce the amount of noxious, and try to be more natural, but, you know, they're, they're looking at like the broader, like, spectrum of stuff, like, the, the broader spectrum of stuff that we use in farming and stuff, you know, I think you're, I think there is a way to be balanced, and like I said, you can't just play the puzzle, but I think, you know, why, I put my bees in the back, because I know when they come spraying, it settles, I've watched where it settles, it's mostly in the front, it doesn't pervert in my backyard, so, I haven't lost a hive because of this, but yeah, they go out in the front, but usually in the morning, it's, you know, dissipated out, it's done its job, it's in the ground where it's supposed to, potentially, yeah, I may lose bees because of that, I'm not losing a lot.
Yeah, well, I love the idea of more of our residents having beehives and whatnot, so.
Mayor?
Right, thank you, Councilmember, what's your name? Adams?
Adams, yeah, we did get one email on this, I wanted to read the comment, it's blz, 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 blz. So, I just want to make sure that was in public, will you make sure that's written down?
Oh, okay.
Thank you for that comment, that was great, okay, anyway.
I don't know that I'll be able to approve those minutes.
Right.
I'll make a motion that we approve an ordinance enacting Section 17-31-5, beekeeping of the Kaysville City Code. What, oh, to also include, residents who are keeping bees may not request a no-spray zone with mosquito abatement district. I'll second.
Okay, thank you, we have a motion and a second, comments?
Discussion?
We may finesse that language, like, I'll work with Nick, to make sure we add that in an appropriate place, and that the language is appropriate, but I think we understand the concept.
Yeah, I am a lover of bees and our pollinators, and I wholeheartedly approve for more folks taking care of bees, but I'm just not comfortable voting for it with the request of no-spray zones, I would like to learn more about that, so that's kind of my position.
There has been a lot of studies by both mosquito abatement districts, there have been a lot of papers written, there was one really extensive study done a year ago, and like I said, as long as you spray as per label, there is no detriment to the bees, and I've done a lot of national studies, it's been talked at the National Mosquito Abatement, I've done it on a local level, I've seen Davis do papers on it, I've seen, and, yeah, if you, if you do not spray as per label, you can kill bees, but we calibrate everything we do, even flying, we calibrate everything, we do it yearly, anything that they do, they have to calibrate and prove that they are spraying as per label.
Yeah, and I understand that, I guess one question would be, if you have multiple neighbors that all request a spray, day after day after day, will the mosquito abatement just douse that neighborhood every day, if different neighbors are requesting sprays on different days, and how that could affect our pollinators and whatnot, so, just some concerns there.
Okay, thank you, Councilmember Jackson, you're up first for a vote.
Nay.
Okay.
Aye.
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 Okay, motion carries, thank you, council. Does anyone have any, any reports to discuss? Councilmember reports? Yes, Councilmember Jackson?
Yeah, so this week, I met with Dexter, our city engineer, and talked about 200 North, just an update on that, and engineer's been selected, and they're looking at everything that needs to go into improving 200, and what needs to be buried, and we talked about trees, and, and how many curbing needs to be redone, and handicap, wheelchair access to up and down the curbs and whatnot, and I, I love the idea of lining 200 North with trees, because it's the gateway into our city, into Main Street, from the east side, and, so I would just like to encourage our council to explore that a little bit, and Dexter said that the city can request that, the engineer that's been selected, they have a, a group within their company that looks at, at trees and things like that, and beautification, and. And I would like to explore that more as a city, so. Because I feel like, once that's done, it's going to be here for 50 years before it's redone, and so I would love to think far ahead.
Fantastic, thank you. Anyone else? Nope. We did have a meeting, and just to let people know, Second North by the ramps, we're going to have double-turning lanes there by the end of September, so that will be really good, and that will help with traffic flow, we feel like. And we've got great progress on the roundabout at Burton Lane, so that's really good, too. The way that, the way that that would work is that the road is already wide, they're just going to restripe it. So, they'll just.
So, it is wide enough?
It's wide enough. Mm-hmm.
All right. Wow.
Oh, yeah, go ahead and talk about that. Go ahead.
Oh, just Heritage Days is the third through the fifth. Councilmember Hunt, do you have more details on that, or Mayor?
Just that it's kind of the new, it's kind of the replacement for Davis County Fair, right? And so, there's like animal displays and activities, horseback rides. We went last year, my kids had a blast, like, they still talk about it. So, it's a worthwhile family activity for sure. So, yeah, bring your families August through to the fifth.
Yep, absolutely. Thank you. Anyone else? No? Okay, Jason, do you have anything to talk to us about?
Yeah, thanks, Mayor. First, I just wanted to shout out to the Public Works Police and Fire last night for the response. They did an outstanding job, and if you haven't had a chance, there's an email I sent, just with all that was going on at the same time. Within literally an hour, we had multiple police and fire calls, and in addition to all the different flooding messes going on all over the town, the city, and I think they did just a great, outstanding job in prioritizing and addressing all those different issues. Also, we have now begun the soft rollout of the outage management system, and so that'll go on for the next several weeks while we work out all the bugs. I told you earlier incorrectly that there was an opportunity for council members and citizens to participate in the soft rollout, but I was mistaken on that. So, this is just an internal thing right now, where basically, when real outage calls come into the city, we're uploading those or putting those into this new system and letting that work through the system where it goes out to the crews and they enter the calls and do the updates. So, as we work out all those bugs, we'll obviously then roll this out live, hopefully in the next couple of months, definitely by the end of the year. So, that's exciting. And then last, just wanted to update you on the Farmington boundary adjustment. I'll be sending out some numbers, but we've met now, we've crunched some numbers, and long story short, is pretty much every scenario that we've looked at, the city's going to come out ahead significantly dollar-wise if we keep those parcels in Kaysville. So, we'll be sharing those numbers with you by email, and then in probably the next council meeting, hopefully, we'll be able to have that as a work item or discussion item and kind of walk through those. So, that's all.
Jason, we appreciate that. As a council, you know, we hate to give up property, and it's going to be great to hear that we've got data to support that that's a good decision. So, thank you so much. All right, thanks, everybody. Do we have a motion? To adjourn.
Sure, I'll make a motion. I'm ready to go.
All in favor?
All right.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, awesome.[1789.82]